Wait, I gotta get this on video.
This is for your hard work and it's also because after, you know, in the next four years, we're all probably gonna need one or two.
We have to break this. Thank you.
Woo, cracking open!
We haven't changed the policy here yet. We still do not have alcohol allowed here at Silverado, but I am working on a new policy statement and perhaps we'll have it at the next meeting.
What, drinks?
I probably not drink this before meeting. Thank you so much.
Has some licks.
Oh, then that's not really liquor.
It should be all better by now.
But that's just the...
Who does?
I'm gonna take this off.
It's in contempt, that's all. It's all that counts. Happy doll. Same with us, who does?
I did, I did do a study. Where is my study?
Are we ready?
I'm getting ready, John.
Okay, can I start?
Yeah. Is everybody ready?
Yeah, are we ready? Okay, well, then let's call the meeting to order. We are in session now. Thank you for coming tonight. Glad to see that we have some people here to participate with us. This is a special meeting. It's primarily going to be dealing with the issue of what do we start doing to fix our various facilities apart? And we're here primarily to discuss that. We're also gonna have a couple other small action items and a closed session at the end that will be just with the board to discuss pending litigation with the Janet Scott case. So, we all are here, so we'll call. And the first item on the agenda tonight is facilities. And Debbie, are you gonna take over the lead on making a presentation of what we're getting ready to try to start doing?
Phil, is it all right if I just talk for a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of overview?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And then you can get into the bidding ready.
Is it gonna be a tons of comments at all?
Yes.
Later.
There will be. And the way that I understand we're gonna do this is first, we're gonna have some action items talking about these facilities and there will be an opportunity to comment on that as we go through action items. And then at the end, before we go into closed session, if people have general announcements or something like that, we'll be able to do that too. So, we're gonna try, we're doing it in this order to try to get things done and move through and take action hopefully.
How creative.
Yeah, and did everybody notice, it does look a little bit cleaner and better hopefully. Two people have been passing by the park.
Where's the clutter?
We had a really good turnout on Saturday.
Where's my stuff?
Quite a bit of a construction dumpster and it's starting to reveal just how dilapidated things are like flooring and landscaping, et cetera. So, Phil, are you gonna start with this?
Well, no, wait, I'd like to say, take a look at the two roll top desks. They're up for bid. Take one home with you tonight.
Phil, so the sound system, right?
Yeah, the sound system.
Lights on this light up here?
Right now, we have one, we're going in order. No one has bid more than the seventy-five dollar asking price. So, as you may have gotten my announcement, it's for the roll top desks and for the sound system, it's seventy-five OBO. And that's OBO on the high side. If someone wants to offer us eighty, then they get it ahead of the seventy-five. Not a bidding war, but just OBO. So, right now, there's one person that emailed me that wanted the desk and then there was another person that said that they were interested in both of the desks and then there was another person that was interested in one desk. So, that's where we're at right now. But, they all only wanna pay seventy-five bucks, which is a good deal for those desks. So, that's where we're at, this cluttered park. And there's been some interest in the sound system, but nobody's heard from us. Does it work?
Good. Steve had it.
Yeah, we had it hooked up in the A building.
It worked. It works. We used it for the Zumba class.
Can I start?
Yeah, that's fine, Debbie. Anybody can start on this. We all have the acting.
All right, so, I, as part of my strategic planning duties, I'm collecting information on what's been happening and I'm looking at things from, just to see, you know, what's going on. And one of the things that we're, that we're looking at is our dire financial situation for SMRPD. Last year, we didn't get enough money to pay our bills. This year, we have a tremendous drain of the children's center, which has greatly depleted our reserves. And looking ahead, we're gonna have to do something to build up our financial position as the SMRPD. Our tax revenues are not sufficient to pay for maintaining, even in the current state, the two community centers and the children's center. There's no money for fixing them up, in other words. So, right now, in terms of trying to think about how to earn more revenue, we're gonna be looking at a lot of different things in the next six months, but something that immediately comes to mind is renting out this facility, particularly for events like weddings or something like that. So, when we, when we discussed the, or when we looked at, well, this isn't actually we looking at, because we're doing it right now, so I'm just presenting this right now. I think I would urge the board to really consider making fixing up the Silverado Community Center a priority so that it can become a facility that is rentable and that is used for activities maybe a little bit different than what we've used it for in the past. And making it presentable and usable means things like getting the sink fixed, which plugs up all the time, replacing the stove, getting a working kitchen there, and also taking these rooms and making them more comfortable and pleasant to be in with maybe different functional areas. So, I did do an analysis of all the rentals and I don't think that our data is accurate. I, there was, there was a lot of missing forms and I tried to match up the facility rental contracts with the income and they didn't match. But overall, this center is rented much, much more than the Majeska Center, which is understandable because it has two buildings, it has a bigger kitchen, it's just more, it's more in keeping with that. And then one of the things that was really interesting is that the facility is rented primarily for children's birthday parties. And the year in which we had our biggest rental income was 2012 and we made one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars in 2013. This is just based on the facility agreements, it's not based on the financial records and there's a reason why we're basing it on the, it made six seventy-five and last year, we only made four hundred dollars. And that did include one wedding when we were supposed to get two hundred and fifty dollars, but I could find no record of that in the books. So, this is just an example of something that we have to clean up. But I do think that this is a lovely part, that I think we could fix these places up so they would be more welcoming. So, I would urge the board as we go and look at this list of potential repairs, that we prioritize this so we can try to start bringing in some additional income.
Did you wanna state that that income does not include the instruction classes, yoga and dance and stuff like that? That's a, that's a, might not have been.
Yeah. Now, these are just facility rentals and recreation programs except for that.
Yeah, Debbie and I talked about separating any accounts between the facilities rentals and the rec program lines, just so we know which is coming from where. And yeah, I think we're all hopeful that we're gonna have some real good facility rentals and people can use it more often and enjoy it and we can get a buck or two too. So, okay. Should I start in on the repairs situation now?
Yeah, I, I think you should. I'd just like to, I think we really do need to find additional sources of revenue. Last year, fiscal year, we had about seventy-five thousand in total income and we had over eighty thousand in expenses and that did not include money that's paid to the children's center. So, and it did, I mean, you guys can see, there weren't renovations made or repairs that are noticeable to your parks and these buildings and they really need it. So, we're, we're having a real problem with a fairly fixed amount of income from property taxes unless some developer comes and builds something really big and, you know, not necessarily that a lot of people in the community would want, but unless that, you got, get these developer fees, you can't really expect it to be a lot different than it was last year. And we're already losing money that way. So, I think we need to, we need to consider really spiffing this up and maybe if we have an alcohol policy for weddings and private parties, people will have a greater interest in using our facilities so that they can, for instance, have a wedding far, far less than probably anywhere else they could go. But we also might be able to start getting some income in and we'll have to revisit the rate schedules for these kind of events, which are at least ten years old and I think they're probably far below what anyone else offers. But we need to offer something good so that it works for everybody. So, that is a way that before our reserves dwindle to too small of a, an amount, maybe we could do something good to make this more pleasant for everybody who uses it, no matter how, but also make it more rentable.
You know what, you guys, let me just tell everybody how we get our money because I'm not sure that everybody really knows. What we do is we get a, a cut, a part of the property tax revenues that the county collects and it's a real tiny part and Bob emailed me the exact number on it. It was... It's two bits for a hundred dollars. Yeah, two, okay, two bits for, and that hasn't changed for like thirty years or something, right? Nineteen sixty-one. Nineteen sixty-one. So, what happens is when the county collects their property taxes and there's two main times of that. One is the supplemental tax bill, if you get a supplemental tax bill, or you get your regular tax bill. When those revenues come in, the county figures it up and then cuts us a check or gives us the little piece that we get. But it's a very, very tiny amount and this board, we've been roughly spending over the years what we have coming in on a regular basis. If there is, if we have a, a big development come in, then we get a, a bigger chunk, kind of a windfall situation. And that has been the source of the money that has, the reserves that have been funneled into the children's center over the last few years. So, that's just where our money comes from, that's primarily it. We also get a few thousand dollars from rec programs and facility rents, so, okay. Yeah, so let's get on to the repairs. We, we went through and we earmarked about fifty different items and this is a, this is a moving target on the repair list. And if we knock off one, we get three new ones. And I've added a couple more here from an old list, Fran believes that actually. So, we went through and prioritized things based on a board survey here and that's where those top nineteen items come in. So, just, I'm just gonna run through these like real fast, one at a time and then we can talk about...
Do you really think we would do that?
Well, uh...
Because some of them are really small.
Yeah.
It won't take long. I don't think it's good for people to hear what we've identified as things that need to be done to our parks and centers. It'll only take you ten minutes.
And, and that's true, it doesn't take me very long. And there's two copies, there are not many copies of this, but there's two copies around. Somebody make sure Beth gets one of those back when it's done, because I stole hers. Okay, number one was the general cleanup. That has been done here and then we're gonna schedule Majeska later on in the meeting. The sand around the play area, it, that's in Majeska and it's Majeska Park. People are looking at that on the safety meeting and it's pretty, it's not that compacted right now. It's still kinda fluffy. Steve, you did, you fluffed it a while back. It feels still pretty fluffy, so, but this is something that still needs to be done. The, the resurfacing of the parking lot, as you may know from me complaining for the last four years about that, this is something that really needs to be done. It's probably a bid job and that needs to be posted and the bids taken and whatnot because it's gonna be over our, I believe fifteen thousand dollar limit. Is it fifteen thousand? I, we still have to, we have to nail that number down.
I'll tell you what the district policy is.
Fifteen.
Okay. You can go on to the next item.
Okay, you'll come back to that.
I mean, this also involves our basketball court over there, which has got an uneven surface, was a, a pretty big crack and a pretty big bump where I think a tree root pushed it up. So, that's really something that we ought to be attending to pretty soon, in my opinion.
Repaint and bondo the bench, that's the bench out here by the, the swing set. And Steve bonded it up, but we, we still either gotta oil it or paint it and I don't know which, because Ron's got some super stuff on it that we may, we may put some super stuff on.
Yeah, he's got a gallon of that stuff, or two gallons or whatever he said he's got, so...
So, that's like half done right now.
Yeah.
Excuse me, oh, I got a little cough here. Five, six are, are not done. Seven is...
They don't know what those are.
Oh, okay. The mountain line warning signs, we need, we really need to get those up.
Majeska.
Majeska, the building B here, new flooring, as you walk, you can feel it go boom, boom. We, the sink, the sink problem is one that Steve's been handling off and on, he's been, you know, rotor, rotor ruttering it out, but it, it really needs some serious re-piping. So, that's gonna be kind of a pricey thing to do and that we have not done yet. The broken lids, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand on the, well, that might not be a bill.
That's required.
Fifteen thousand?
It does if it's over fifteen thousand, yeah. No, and we're not allowed to kiss people, but the last resurfacing, I think, the last resurfacing, I think, was about five or six grand. Okay, the broken lids and the trash cans, I called waste management on that. They couldn't find the trash cans, I don't know why, so I recalled, so they're gonna get that taken care of, that's in Majeska. And then, okay, all these, let me run, you know, I don't wanna run down each one now. Hold on.
Yeah.
Tables, number fourteen is tables. Our tables are in bad shape. The ones that fold in the center and they got a little handle on them that you can carry around like a little, a briefcase. I bought those probably about eight years ago or something like that on the old board. They were designed to last for, and they've been beat to pieces and they're dirty and they're messed and they're broken up. But I, I'm going to probably request of this board that we get ten new ones. They're forty bucks at Walmart, I saw them yesterday. So, we get ten of them for four hundred dollars, gonna be brand new, six feet long ones, you know, we need new tables. It's not too expensive. So, that's that item. The, let me see, the new timer for the area around building B, apparently the, people like to steal the timers on the, on the string, on the post system. So, we don't know how to deal with that right at the moment.
You have to build a cage around.
Fencing in front, Shay and Wendy.
We talked about putting gates in the front and putting something all the way along.
And repairing what used to be a wire fencing, similar to what's on Holt's Ranch, just before fencing, used to be out front here and the holes are still there to, to replace the holes and put up new wire fences and put in gates and gates across the drive.
So, nothing's been done on that.
Nothing.
The new chairs, I would like to look into getting some new chairs too. You know, these metal ones are not very, nobody sits in them, you know? This is really boring stuff. What we have to do though?
But it's the special meeting.
It's a special meeting for, for people with nothing on TV tonight. All these other items are looking straight down, have not been taken care of. I noticed the gopher holes are getting the worst out here, we gotta look at that.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, go ahead. Anybody interrupt me as we go along.
Okay, so, I think that we can create this, that we can make this park into a beautiful place. And I think one way to start is with native plants and succulent landscaping and that area in the front needs it, the big planter needs it, under the tree needs it, we can put in jade plants and my, I have a huge yard filled with succulents, so we can just, and I have to, Kevin has some too. So, I mean, we don't have to buy any plants.
We just have to pay for the labor to...
Right.
Move them in.
And I have contacted the Inter Canyon League about maybe getting the, the native plant funds that they had on their books for centuries, that maybe we can get it for the, it's only a couple hundred bucks right now. Oh, so Lynn's got the number?
It's a, a double, uh, four hundred and four dollars and three cents.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a, that's a, that's a good part of what we're thinking about doing, so, okay.
Well, there's, there's great money value.
Oh, let's talk later. Okay. Okay, and I think that's, that's kind of an update right now. Steve, are we, the septic system, is Ken R. doing anything like regular with pumping over here?
Yeah. Over here, no, he's not over here when, when it goes bad, you know, I mean, we haven't had any problems related to septic over here.
Okay. Okay, so that might not be, that was one of, um, Fran's old list, so...
Okay, yeah, we, we got that figured out.
Okay, and, and Fran, of course, also has been always talking about we need cleaning supplies. We need supplies, which he's right.
We need what?
Make sure we have a...
Cleaning supplies, so people can...
A push, you know, a, a dustpan and...
Can I say something else?
Okay, yeah.
Something that we also all need to remember is that OC Parks is opening up a community park for us at the school in like a year and a half and they're going to have a very large meeting room there and it's likely that SMRPD will move its meetings there and hopefully other community groups will too. So, so we need to think about that too.
Yeah, just to flesh that out a little bit, OC Parks told me and affirmed it, I've talked to them twice, that the big meeting room that they're making over there is available for SMRPD and for ICL so that we can have a much nicer, newer space halfway between our communities. And that means that this room, for instance, could be available to create a rec room with games or, you know, a comfortable place that's more like a lounge or something that kinda lives with people getting together, seniors or whatever, a rec room and also could work in conjunction if you have big parties and weddings and people want boat buildings, you got one that could serve as a dining room kitchen area, seating for your party and then you have this overflow room that could actually be more directed to people doing what we would think of as recreation. So, when we don't have to meet here anymore for these meetings that we have every month, this space becomes available for the purpose.
When, speaking of like weddings and things, the, one of the major things about some of the big wedding venues is they, they need a place for the bride, like a bride's room where they get ready, they change, so, like you were saying, maybe that would help work into that, that whole scheme of things. You, you know, you can't just have a place to go in the park, they, they really need the whole kinda day atmosphere, so, anyway.
Yeah, tell the bride to go to the ladies restroom to get ready. What's that? Tell them the bride to go to the ladies restroom to get ready.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
You know, and if we can make this place really nice, I'm sure that there is a lot of people in this community who would like to be married here. And we were talking about like the, like that kitchen, you know, a lot of people, I, they go to Newport Beach or something and they get all these caterers, but people in this community would wanna have their relatives come and everybody cook in the kitchen together and I'm sure you've all been to the potlucks and things here. So, if we could just, it, it's very nice over there to do that and that could be a room where we have meals together and things like that, we have a nice kitchen and then this could be a more comfortable room with like things for kids to play with and seniors to relax and stuff like that.
And maybe Saturday, Saturday rec, open rec room.
And bingo!
Well, bingo too, but we need a non-post, but, you know, one of the things that, in terms of repurposing that we've been thinking about a little bit is the idea that we could have things like foosball tables, ping pong tables, and you know, TV game programs, et cetera, here and we could have it open potentially every Saturday for all the people in the canyon, especially our youth, to come and play games. We probably have to hire somebody, you know, to kinda sit by the door and make sure everything, you know, is safe, et cetera, but that's potentially something that wouldn't cost that much, I think, that would be an opportunity that would work with these other things we're talking about too, so...
I have a question. It's kind of a few times when we talk about our parks that for some reason, we're not really allowed to post that people can't enter the park because it's public space. If there's a wedding going on, how do we work that out where people can't come in?
We have to work that out.
Yeah.
Yeah. We would have to do that.
I went to a wedding in a public park and it wasn't, it wasn't much of, what'd you say?
Out of the food.
It was good, but they, the, it wasn't really much of a, of a problem, they simply had the wedding in the park. Now, you know, I don't, I don't know...
This is a small park.
Yeah, and that, it was a huge park, so maybe...
Well, that, that is part of the idea and there's, I think Debbie brought it, maybe some information about a potential gazebo or something.
I got pictures.
Be over in the corner.
I'm putting it in gazebo.
And she's been, she's been looking at that with the idea, hey, you could have a wedding where you have these rooms, you can have friends and family cook or bring in a caterer or do a combo and you could have a gazebo over there and put a bunch of seats in the park and be married right there and do the whole thing here for a very reasonable price compared to anything that you could possibly get as an alternative, but also could bring us, maybe get us beyond four hundred dollars a year in, in rentals. So, yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and talk about assignments for this thing.
Oh, on every assignment, we're, we're people volunteer.
Well, can we talk first about what we should do?
Well, I figured we would focus on the top priority items.
But, but, but Phil, for someone that, if we really do wanna fix up this place, some of these things aren't listed on our top priorities, but, I mean, the first thing would be to get the kitchen working and then we're gonna have to do this floor and paint and, you know, make things a lot more attractive in an inexpensive way, which I think we can do, it's not that hard.
Well, I was, you know, I was thinking as far as prioritizing this, first off, I'd, I'd like to say that what's happened in the past is something needs to be done and everybody goes, hey, Steve! And the result, Steve is winding up not really doing job, he's, he's doing, he's doing more than the job he's actually supposed to do. He's doing some sort of expanded job and he's, it's, so, what we, what we need to do is...
He's present.
Yeah, he's present, thank you. So, what we need to do is, is take on some of this ourselves and so I thought what I would say, and Debbie, you can, you can float around and whatever you might think needs to be done, you can add to this list.
Well, I, I think that first of all, board members should decide what they would like to be in charge of.
Right, absolutely, that's supposed, what I was, where I was going. I think people, you, the, the board here should decide what, what and how much they would like to take on and commit to doing and then maybe give us a, a deadline, a self-imposed deadline of when it'll get done.
And when you say take responsibility for it, you're talking about getting the pricing and being ready...
you might think needs to be done, you can add to this list.
Well, I, I think that first of all, board members should decide what they would like to be in charge of.
Right, absolutely, that's supposed, what I was, where I was going. I think people, the, the board here should decide what, what and how much they would like to take on and commit to doing, and then maybe give us a deadline, a self-imposed deadline of when it'll get done.
And when you say take responsibility for it, you're talking about getting the pricing and being ready to present something to the board or to.
Whatever, whatever.
Let Steve get it done.
Hopefully not, you know, let Steve get it done, but, yeah, take on all the responsibility if it needs money to, to make the proposal and to pay.
Can I ask about that? So like with Steve, because Steve lives here and he does the regular maintenance things, but since we have a lot of these different types of things, so, I mean, he would be invited to, to present an estimate for some of these, but we can.
Absolutely.
Hire whoever.
Yeah, for the ones under the limit, you know, I, I think everybody probably would say, hey, Steve, do you have time to do this, do you wanna do a bid on it or something?
Right.
But if not, you know, then.
Steve, is that what you?
Yeah, that's fine, that's perfect, yeah.
Yeah, then, you know, we can go outside as needed or wanted. With board approval.
So are we gonna agree on five items for any of this tonight or?
Well, Debbie's got one.
She's got one, it's already processed out, but otherwise, what we're doing right now is we want on the board to kind of take leadership, slicing this out, getting it ready, proposing the board and seeing it.
Right, right.
So any volunteers or anyone?
Well, yes, I will, I will take the, I'll take, Eric Shea's got a list.
I bet we all want to do the same thing. Although we don't.
You know, I, I don't, does any, I was gonna take, I was gonna take number, number three, because that's my own personal interest in this thing. Does anybody wanna fight me for three or do I have three?
Yeah, tell them what that is.
Three is, three is repair and resurface the park.
Resurface it, you can have it.
I hope your pet peeves.
It was my pet peeve for years. Okay, so I'm gonna take that one.
I would, I, somebody else is planning, I was already working on the same play area and done the park, made up two bids, but I need more.
Okay, so there's Shea on two.
And then I, I wouldn't mind doing the signage, I've already made signs for the state parks, I can, I can get whatever signs we want made.
Talking about number five?
Number five?
Number five, mountain lion signs?
Okay, now Kevin already has made a really nice sign for the mountain lion, isn't that up?
Oh, but that's fine.
Yeah, we got that up, but it's, it's laminated, it's, wait, yeah, it's laminated now, but it's not, it's not a permanent thing, man.
Is it metal?
No, we need, we need something steel behind it and we need, yeah.
Well, wait a second, this is a mountain lion sighting that you saw evidence of mountain lions during this year, so as soon as you said that, Kevin printed something up.
And he did a great job on print it up, without a doubt.
You don't need to necessarily have a permanent forever mountain lion site, it was just my feeling, because we had evidence of mountain lion had been visiting the Majeska Park, we needed to tell people immediately.
Yeah, I, I tapped.
You sent that door signage over there already?
I've got, there's two signs up there right now, though, they should still be there right now, but people like to steal those because they're kind of cool, you know, if you, you know, from the city.
So you're talking about a mountain lion sighting sign, I'm talking about there may be mountain lions and snakes.
His sign's amazing.
Okay, that's if I.
I'm just saying, we don't, I'm not sure we need to have a permanent mountain lion, I mean, we can do that, we can make a permanent one and have it there forever because if we see mountain lions more than once.
Yeah, that, that we got from Cal.
I guess we ought to just do it.
We got that from Cal.
Was that snake?
I thought there is one.
Snake, mountain lions, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, okay, one sign. Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
All right, so you can, yeah.
I'll work with Kevin.
Watch out for Shea.
Shane, Kevin.
Okay.
Watch out for Shane Kevin.
I'm gonna, I'm working with Steve on the bench, so I'll take the repaint bond of the bench. That's number four.
Brett's been wanting to do a storage team right in the handball club.
Oh, there it is, yeah. Okay, so.
He'll have to get an assessment of it, he's trying to repurpose whatever.
You're gonna be in charge, but using Brett, is that how we're doing this?
Sure.
You'll be that one.
Okay, can I just make a request on that? Is that, because I was, I wanted to talk about redoing this room and that room, because I would like to do like a proposal for that. I don't know that I want to be in charge of the whole thing, but I'd like to do, I'd like to do colors and stuff like, I'd like to do that.
For in there? At what number are we talking about?
Well, that's kind of like repaint, it's not really a number, it's a design, it's not that.
Is it repaint interior?
Yeah.
That's not, would be number twenty-one?
Yeah, but it's also for a year too, it's A and B.
I don't know when that will.
Well, we'll make it A and B. Okay, we'll make it A and B.
Well, what I'm saying is like, if you're gonna do the storage, I'd appreciate if you guys would do the design first so we could see what it's.
Oh, it did have to, yeah, it has to be approved, so.
Okay, Debbie, I'm gonna add repaint interior and design and add B on that one and just.
I hear you whispering.
And then if Wendy's willing to help me, where's Wendy? Do you want to help me with the front, remember our idea of that fencing? And then, um, because we want to have that done by the fair.
Oh, yeah, I think the fencing's really important. Can I al, can, you want to do the landscaping?
Where's that?
It, it's, what's plant succulents and cactus in front of that landscaping? Yeah, and it's number, it's not a number, it's down here.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
And then the refill and mulch plant.
Okay, wait a minute, where, oh, so plant cyclones, okay, so that's, plant cyclones and cactus is who now?
John and Kevin.
John and Kevin, okay.
Yeah, and you guys, we felt that that was pretty important, why say, that's the royal weed? Because that front area is just so visible and we want to take some of my really big agave plants and put in there to make it really dramatic and so.
We've got plants that, particularly here, is it originally from the Holt's Ranch that are really cool and different looking, they go up the pile like trees and.
So you would take the second one down from plants and succulents also, which is refill the mulch and stuff like that, that's the same kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do both of those.
You gonna do refill and mulch there?
And, yeah, we've, we've already had Mario, who's a really good gardener, come out and look at it, and Debbie's gonna talk about one or more of it, so.
And I'm gonna take fourteen, the tables?
Is it here?
Yeah, that's building A, but it's basically here in general.
Oh, you're talking about the interior too? Yeah.
And I'll take, I'll take number eleven, fourteen for all black boards. Just so you, if, if you know the, in the building next door, the, at the very end of it, there are two, they're either old chalkboards or old black boards. And we discussed how you can get rolls of cork and you could insert that into that area where it used to be, either a blackboard or a bulletin board.
That was a school.
When it was a school, yeah, they use that for teaching. And that would help to re-tone the room a little bit, so it's not so white. But also if people had meetings there, it'd be a great place where they could put up things on the boards and use it for informational purposes, so.
I, I have a question. I always thought the acutes that came in that room were a little bit harsh. Does anybody else feel like that or is, was that just me? Like when you're in there for events and things like that, it feels a little bit like.
It's bouncy, it's bouncy because of the flooring, I'll say that. The ones that people are talking, yeah.
Yeah, because when we were there, we'd pop, go in there and look for clutter.
The cork would help.
Number eight is broken lids on trash cans, Steve, isn't that something you told me?
No, I, I got that.
Oh, you got that one?
Yeah. I'll take the one right underneath the most far, the removal post and fill it. Oh, okay, great. We had talked to Steve about that. Okay. Can't complain about it, not do it.
Where is it?
You're the man, where's the stove?
Where's the stove, Phil?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it's not on here.
You know what else is likely missing is the stage, the backside of the stage, I know it's real minor, but I.
Someone, someone transcribed this into Excel and they must have missed it.
Yeah.
Who would that be?
I don't know, Debbie, who would that be? Okay, so we got the stove, that, that's the end one, we'll, we'll add that to the end.
And the backside of the stage is still open and kids can get in there and stuff.
Where's that?
It's not on.
Yeah, we're just adding stuff.
All right, I think the question is the, uh, sign, I think the sign that's on wheels out there, is that on your list?
No.
Oh, new wheels?
New sign?
Those are expensive.
New wheels? They don't need new wheels, I took the wheels off it.
It wasn't free, it was cheap, but it wasn't free.
It reminds Bob of Houston, though.
It reminds me a lot of what you see sitting out in front of pawn shops and triple X.
How do you know?
Oh, is that where those are?
Why do you know so much about?
They used to drive by all the time.
She's from Florida.
Can I, let me say something about that, because I forgot about this until you just mentioned that, but during the campaign, one of the things that I felt pretty strongly about was putting up some sort of a board at each community center that listed what was going on there that, for, for the next two weeks or something like that. So I think that this issue of signage at the community centers is an important one and I think we should address it as a whole type of thing, not just one sign. Because I think we need more than one sign, there's really no way to know what's going on here.
There was another one that I think maybe is in the children's center, but it was bought and they bought two. It's over in the, it's down in Majeska.
It said the entrance to Majeska.
Just ask Debbie, she knows where they are.
Yeah.
Is she the one who changes all the stuff?
LEDs for lights outside, I'll take that, I already saw some things at Costco that looks like it might work for forty-five bucks a unit, LED. This is what, 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 these, these lights that are on our buildings around here, the halogen lamps haven't been replaced because they are a huge energy draw.
Right.
And it looks like we could just swap them out at a very reasonable price.
Now, now I'll be Mister Somatplant, we don't want too much light to lose.
Yeah.
But I've heard people are complaining that we don't have lights. And these are, these are motion activated lights, so that if people are, are going to the restroom where they're in the park and it's evening, the lights will come on instead of being in the jar.
Right, yeah.
And you, you know, they have those that are just step lights and not above lights and if you're talking about just getting to someplace, then all you need are these lower step lights and they're.
Right, and I can wear that, these are already fixtures that are up, Steve has purposely not been putting new bulbs in because they're so energy intensive.
Yeah, I agree with you, it's climate in these communities too.
Okay.
Can I add a bit of information? I saw this old house Sunday, and they were doing a thing about a basement and they had these fixtures, they were LEDs, and they went in the old surround thing and they just screwed in and they looked like, like my bathroom light, and they were a single unit and they just screwed in and they were LED and nice and bright.
Right, yeah, and not really nice light.
Do you want me to go find those?
We're talking about exterior lights?
Exactly, I will.
Okay, if you see something, let me know.
You know, I hate to sound like a pessimist, I hate to sound like a pessimist, because those damn things are expensive, somebody's gonna steal them.
These are the ones I saw bolted on, but.
Are they bolted, if they're bolted on, that's another thing, but.
Yeah, screwed on.
If they're stealing the timers out by the poses, they're gonna steal these LEDs.
They're not worth it, they're not worth anything.
The LEDs?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no one will steal them because they're not worth anything.
So Phil, were, you said that you were talking about maybe replacing these lights, what would we replace these with?
LEDs.
LEDs, yeah.
Do they make LEDs that fit in fluorescent fixtures?
They actually do have them now.
We've got all sorts of research that's.
Okay, but what would be the energy efficiency of that over a fluorescent, considering how much it would cost? Because that sounds like an expensive idea.
Well, you also have longevity, they'll last.
A lot longer.
Yeah, these you have to replace all the time.
I know, but this is a lot of lamps.
By the way, speaking of lights real fast, I, I want to give kudos to Steve again because we had electric bills here that were running four hundred and fifty, five hundred bucks, six hundred bucks, and Steve has managed through diligence and switching off lights and saying, hey, don't turn on that light, has managed to knock it down to about an average of eighty or ninety dollars.
He doesn't let anything going on at the same time.
Why, everybody's sweating here.
How about some motion sensors?
The ones I looked at are at Costco, they're motion sensor and LED, so.
And, and for the indoor lights, a lot of times, I've seen motion sensors, um, like right in the wall, so if no one's in here and someone does not turn the lights off, they go off automatically. You know, you know, those four or five hundred dollar bills, it sounds like a lot of lights are on a lot of the time when nobody's here.
It was a big problem with air, too many air conditioners on at each time.
That too.
Steve, do we have a, in your, in your opinion, do we have a problem with these lights being left on a lot when no one's here?
Not really.
Okay.
Well, everybody's been pretty good about it, and you can usually see, when I come in at night, I can see if the lights are on in here sometime or.
What about solar lights?
The majority of the rest are definitely units on a timer.
Yeah, okay. What about, anybody want to volunteer for new, investigating new flooring and repairing the clogging sink? The sink's a real big deal, if we're gonna start using that and really having it available for weddings and trying to push people to get their caterer in there, that sink, as I understand it, Steve dreads it every time we have an event because he's gotta get out there for two hours to dream it out, we need a new, we need a new pit, right?
Yeah.
Well, Phil needs to.
Yeah, and you know, I'm thinking that back when Vargas was working on all that, it wasn't the contractor talking about how much it would cost to get that fixed, I think we asked him that, it was, it was a pretty big number, but let me, let me, I'll do that one time. Okay, I'll take the. Was that already clogging? Yeah, and I've done at this point, but we can go on forever with this, so we can call it out.
That's a good idea, very good.
Do you want to look for a gazebo, Phil?
Debbie, you're the gazebo person.
We can just put it down and give it to you.
Yeah.
Since you've already done it.
This is ten minutes, this isn't any really.
That's part of design. Okay, we're then, we're done with that and.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you've got a landscape, wanted to describe it and we'll see if anybody wants some of it.
Okay, so what we're talking about doing, this was just because we really wanted to feel like we could get something done, so is, like I said, putting the agaves and the Holt's Ranch cactus and really tall vines and some other things down there. And then, I don't know about any of you, but this big planter that only has like four inches of dirt in it, actually, the problem with that is that the sprinklers are way down on the bottom, so actually taking that, redoing all the sprinklers inside, they all have to be lifted up and then replaced and then filling it up and putting all kinds of beautiful succulents in it. And then underneath the tree, there's another planter that has like five inches of dirt in it, maybe a little bit more, and then putting it in there. And then it turns out the bathroom, the stucco's all broken and the screen because people hit it and stuff like that, so I have.
Let's fix now.
What?
Let's fix.
Thank you. We can just fill that whole area with jade plants and that would be, that would be really easy. And all of you who have yards here know that really the only place to get plants to grow in the canyon is from somebody else in the canyon, having paid many thousands of dollars for landscapers and watch my cactus trees that I paid for by the inch. So, anyway, crazy. So anyway, so I would like to make a motion that the board approves a budget of two thousand dollars for doing that landscaping here in this overall community center.
One second.
I guess I think we would take that.
First the board and then open to the, any more board discussion?
I'm, I'm assuming it'll come in less than that.
Well, I think it's, I think it is a really good idea to give us much better herb side appeal and also pop when we come in to make it look like it's actually taken care of and the landscaping, which it doesn't look like anything's been done in many, many years, so, I agree with the concept.
Could part of that be where the boy scouts, is that front planting area that those pieces of wood knocked down to keep people from driving in, parking on those plants? But they're all busted up right now and we're keeping them even though they're nasty because they keep people coming pulling in up here in the front, in front of our sign.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, they're gonna fix those too.
Right in, yeah, right in front of our sign, the split rail fence, we talked already. Right in, yeah, right in front of our sign, the split rail fence, we talked already with them about that. Part of what you do to split the front is we want some good, really beautiful cactuses around the sign and we want that fence to be fixed. So it looks like we have a part that is taken care of. So.
Maybe some wagging.
Public comments, Benny?
Just a couple of them. Number one, I'd be happy to, um, get some soil amendment for you. Bring it in before the rain, number two.
That's exactly what you're talking about.
Ah, horse potatoes. So number two, I have these, and I don't know whether they're agaves or century plants, but they're irrigated. And I should know, you know, I mean, I don't like that, so I never really know. So, but I've got tons of them up on my hill and I would be happy to see them go somewhere.
Are they the yellow and green? They're kind of like a blue agave, but they're more all over. We, we already, there's a bunch in our yard that Mario has looked at that he's ready to take. There's not gonna be that many of those kind of plants here though, because we have. Yeah. Any other public comments?
I just wanna say, Connie, one of the things I would like to do when things settle down is, I think a succulent swap, even though you don't like them, I think it would be a really nice thing for the canyon since it's so hard to get.
You know, I've got probably a ten by twelve jade plant at my house.
Wow. They really grow out here, don't they?
Would you like to make a formal request to the ICL for that four hundred dollars, four hundred plus dollars and change?
We, we can, we can make a formal, could we do that verbally at the next meeting? Or, I did email you guys, but you may not be at the next meeting.
I think that can be part of what we do, if we're gonna approve this two thousand dollars, that we can get money to defray that. Are we, are we ready for a vote on this action item? Okay, all those in favor of a motion to allocate two thousand dollars to replant the front and planters and next to the bathroom, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so opposed, so that passes.
So should I talk about the cleanup of the Gethsemane communities?
Yeah.
Okay, um, how's February seventh sound? That's a Saturday, right? I think the seventh is a Saturday.
So do we have President's Day, right?
Yeah.
Do we want to include it on President's Day? Will there be more or fewer people available?
I, I don't think, we've got a tremendous amount of, of work to do over there. Um, so I don't, I do not think we have a tremendous amount of work. We've got some hay over there, uh, we've got, yeah, we've got some hay over there that's kind of.
Sorry.
No, it's strong, I'm sorry, yeah, it's strong. Yeah. No, if it was hay, you would have been all the way, yeah.
Is it manure or horse fat?
Yeah, yeah. And we have a, a pallet over there in the park that needs to be gotten rid of. But there isn't a whole lot of stuff in the, in the actual, uh, community center. So I think if we schedule it and I'll announce it, I was surprised at how many people showed up for the big cleanup.
Anybody that go over there that might have something, that might want something, that before we throw stuff away? Like you did here, you know.
Over there, there is.
Nobody did anything about it.
I don't think so, but that's the perk of cleaning up, you know, if you say, oh, can I have this and you're throwing it out.
There's some old, um, VHS tapes.
Yeah, I've actually already.
Some bleach bottles.
I've, I've already started throwing those out, actually, so. They've been there for years.
February one?
February, February, no, not February one.
What was the date?
February one's a national holiday.
February seventh, right?
The seventh.
Okay, so let's just set it February seventh, Gethsemane.
Are you gonna have to run a dumpster?
Super Bowl.
It's Super Bowl.
Oh, Super Bowl, of course.
Yeah.
First.
The first is the Super Bowl.
That's the holiday. It's the national holiday.
We're safe now, we can do it on February seventh.
So are you gonna run a dumpster or what?
I don't think we're gonna need it, Debbie.
What are you gonna put the stuff in?
I think you have a friend with a truck.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think we can, if, we can get it in all over here, especially if I do a little pre-cleanup. I don't think there's much, that much stuff on.
Do you need a budget?
No.
So I'll come over and put some over for you.
Okay.
Just remind me.
Okay, so since we don't have a budget, we're not approving money to spend, it seems like we can just set the date.
Set the date, February seventh, nine to one, yep.
Move on to the next idea, which is historical window discussion?
Yeah, the, this, uh, historical window, um, this is something Dick Ertman has mentioned that I guess is, is over at Ron Ertman's place. But I, I don't think it's something that we want. I haven't seen it yet and I haven't coordinated with, with Dick to go look at it. So let me, let me go look at it, we can talk about this later maybe, because I don't even know what exactly.
I don't have to leave it in the agenda item. I don't have to keep adding it.
No, let's, let's, I'll, I'll talk to Dick about it.
Any other items related to facility maintenance and repair?
Oh, the window.
For the market.
Shadow, shadow, like a mosaic.
It's broken, it's broken apart.
The historical window is broken?
It's thick, it's broken, it's a big, it's not gonna be easy to deal with then.
He was supposed to have been at the meeting to talk about it.
He doesn't feel well.
He's not feeling good.
Allison.
Yes, but there were.
We volunteered, Allison.
Are you trying to save the window? Because there are people that do that.
Yeah, I don't know, because I don't exactly know what this window is. Dick was supposed to have told me about it. Oh, it's the old, okay, yeah, okay, it's the old K and R window. All right, well.
No, no, the other guy.
Wendell or Jack?
Jack Wendell, yeah.
And it was broken.
Because nothing else. I know that the library is wanting to put together the kind of like a little area with, you know, historical things and things like that. So if nothing else, they might be interested in it for the new library.
It's, it's, it's too, that's not.
I'm just saying, Ron, you know, if it's, if Ron's got it, then maybe if he wants to do something with it, he can call me if he's having to, if you happen to see him. I don't see Ron very often.
That thing's dangerous, man. I mean, it's really, it's huge.
What's Ron keeping it for?
Because Dick wanted to keep it.
Because Dick wanted to.
We, we just spent all day Saturday cleaning all this up out of here. And if the library, if your new place wants it, that's why I see parks in the library. So I don't think we need to be really aggressive about glomming onto this broken window. Just a thought. Okay.
Let's the ICL.
Are we ready to move to other business? Okay, other business, first item is membership in, uh, CSDA and, and ISDOC. We can talk about that, Phil?
Okay, CSDA is the California Special District Association and ISDOC is the Independent Special Districts of Orange County. These are organizations, um, that can provide information to special districts and, uh, offer certain programs and advice. And it does cost, uh, a fair amount to be a part of, uh, CSDA especially, but ISDOC as well. And, um, I would propose that, that, um, we not join these because, uh, it seems like to me that the benefits probably don't outweigh the cost right now.
I second that. How much is it? Three hundred and seventy-five dollars for one.
Is that the magazine that you guys have up there, the Special Districts Magazine? Is that what that's from?
Yeah.
Is there one up here?
Yeah, there, there.
Special Districts.
They're lobby organizations for special districts.
They're kind, they're, that's where we got our, uh, our, uh, CPA from, that magazine. There's kind of some good information in there about grants and all kinds of different things. I don't know.
Yeah, there is.
We do get the magazine now, so I mean, you can get that, you know, I don't think it's gonna stop coming to you.
Well, well, we can always rejoin, but I think for right now.
The, uh, there is a Parks District Association, right?
Special Districts?
Well, not that I know.
Because your insurance comes from.
Oh, that's Capri.
Capri, but in order to get Capri, you have to be a member of.
California Parks and Recreation Association.
Yeah.
Well, this is California Special District Association.
There's a lot of water districts and.
We're discussing this.
We're not gonna do anything. We won't do anything to jeopardize Capri. So.
Okay, so you have a concern that we may have to, these things do cost around four hundred bucks each, it seems like.
But I don't think it's even one of those too. I guess not.
Yeah.
So we'll just check.
We'll check, but, but basically, we don't need a motion or anything because it would just be a matter, we need a motion to join, probably.
Okay, so the next item is opening of the meeting format. And this specifically relates to, um, today, as with our last meeting, we went right through the fall to order, roll call, then got right into the action items. With the idea of let's cover as much as we can. Um, at the last regular meeting, someone objected to the fact that we did not pledge allegiance to the flag. And, uh, raised the question of whether we didn't need to do that. After the meeting, I, um, looked through, um, twelve years of agendas and also talked to some people. And it appears that the first time this was ever done was in May twenty thirteen. So over fifty years, this board, to my knowledge, has not pledged allegiance to the flag. And it's not that, there's no requirement that we do it, it's not a legal requirement or anything. Um, the pledge didn't even exist until the late eighteen hundreds and the under God part didn't get inserted till my birthday, nineteen fifty-four. Some people are not, um, I think, really comfortable doing this kind of formal thing. Uh, some people are not comfortable with the under God part of it. You could argue that maybe we should do other things, Bill of Rights or citing district policy or, um.
Start a single banner.
Singing songs, they do that at ICL. So, uh, the question is for this board, um, is whether, um, we, and I put it down as an action item, so we get to vote on it, is, um, whether we want to have any kind of, um, special thing we do before we start right into roll call and, and our action items. So, um, board members, if you have any, uh, opinions you want to say about that, you can, and then we'll open it up to the audience. If they want to comment about it, they can do that, and then we'll go to a vote. So, anybody on the board have anything they want to say about whether we should do something, pledge allegiance or otherwise?
I like the otherwise.
Me too.
What is the otherwise?
Uh, no pledge allegiance.
No pledge.
I'm American, everyone here is American. I don't believe it's even done in schools anymore. I know for a fact it's not done at the children's center. Uh, when they start class, I don't think we need to do it. And, and it makes me uncomfortable when I believe in God and someone else believes in God and then I say God and they talk louder to not say God. And it just, it's a bunch of hoopla.
Oh, God.
That would be mean.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, I, this, that I, I don't like doing it. And if any of you remember our oath of office, our oath of office, we promised not only to pledge allegiance to the flag, but to defend the flag against foreign forces or whatever. It's a very strong oath.
Foreign and domestic.
What?
Foreign and domestic.
Yeah, foreign and domestic, right. And to be, um, just, for me personally, my word is good. And this, this goes beyond patriotism, it goes to religion and stuff like that. If I say that I'm pledging allegiance or if I say that I'm committed to something, then I am. And if I have to keep saying it every week or every month, I feel as though I was lying the last time. So for me, this is a matter of personal integrity. My word is good and I don't need to repeat myself all the time.
Okay, any other board comments?
Whoa.
I know.
Look, I have, I have a comment.
I don't have an opinion either way. I wasn't bothered that we weren't doing it, although the county board of supervisors does that plus a prayer. Actually does pray. And, um, when it was brought to our board, I thought, well, you know, that's all right, we'll be doing, used to doing it. So, but I don't really have an opinion for against doing it because I truly feel that the pledge to the board state California, the United States of America, the Constitution was sufficient.
Okay. Um, I'll just make a comment on my own. I am a little uncomfortable with it. Uh, it's a formal thing and, and it's like, it's kind of this challenge, everybody has to stand up together and prove that we're all patriotic. And, you know, I, I've taken three courses on constitutional law. Uh, and, um, studied lots of history. I love studying about what our country is really about. Um, and, um, I did take an oath of the office that as I understood it, I have to be able to go out there and shoot somebody, it sounded like, in terms of what my obligations are to defend our government and our constitution. And personally, you know, if, if I had my brothers and I was a pedantic and wanted to teach in these meetings, I would be probably trying to go into constitutional law and the Bill of Rights and what this, you know, what the founding fathers said about separation of church and religion, or church and state and all of that. And I know you don't want to do, talk about that. I know. So anyway, that's my only comment. So, members of the public, if you would like to say anything about this, you don't need to. It's kind of like the pledge, you, you know, I don't mean it's totally optional, but personally, but if you want to say something.
I do. I think it was brought on, um, I think it's used as a pressure, like, like the big hoopla over whether or not Obama was wearing a flag pin one day. I think it's a Tea Party thing. I think it is, um, it, it's divisive and, um, Blammer Katie was a co-pleaded in the, uh, under God in, in California, so I am specifically, uh, against, um, saying the pledge because I think it, it is theater for, um, pressuring people into, you're one of us or you're not one of us or you're different. And I think we're all, we are all in this together. We need to be together. Our hills come down together, our, our things set on fire together. We are a tribe, we need to be together and I think that's nice.
Any other comments?
We're not in first grade anymore.
They don't, they don't do it there.
They don't, they don't do it there.
They don't do it there nowadays. No one does the pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance in our school districts.
I think it's more important to remind people about the mission of the board, which is right on the top of the agenda.
We, yeah, and, and that is a possibility, we could do that.
You don't have to say no, it's on the top of the agenda.
Right, and it's the last meeting, I read the district policy because it's part of what we were doing because I thought it was really important to this question of serving all the members of our community with recreational activities in our parks. So I do think we'll be talking about that throughout meetings this year. I appreciate that.
Well, you know, I'll be the only one in the room that, that talks against it because I was the one who brought the pledge of allegiance to the board.
And you're welcome to tell us.
Well, I, I, Shay brought it up and I'm glad that she did because the reason why I wanted to implement it was because the first time that I went to the county and meeting oranges, uh, the county orange meetings, yeah, they were.
How many oranges were there?
There were a lot of oranges.
It was an orange place in Orange County.
The county orange meetings, they did the pledge of allegiance, which I thought was great. To me, it wasn't about religion. It wasn't about being divisive, which I'm really surprised by some of these comments. It was about that we're Americans and that's the one thing that brings us all together. Whether you're, you know, left wing or right wing, or you like Obama or you don't like Obama, we're American and we're coming together for that reason. Um, and I really feel like it's very insulting that this is the first thing that you do. We don't even have the American flag in the building any longer.
I threw it out.
I don't even think that's funny to joke about. I don't think that's funny to joke about. It's insulting.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it's really insulting and, and I understand that, you know, my views are different than everybody else's views in this room, so I'm the, the odd man out saying that, but I don't, I, I don't care because I, I think it's really offensive.
Lisa, why is it insulting to you that people would have different opinions about this? Why does that make you feel insulted?
It doesn't, no, it's not that people have different opinions, it's the things that you've all said about it, that it's divisive, that I don't like. That it's divisive, that I don't like to say it. It makes me uncomfortable, I mean, it's theater, it's a tea party thing. Those are criticisms about the reasons why people want to say the pledge of allegiance because we're American and we're proud to be American, and like I said, it brings us all together for one point.
But Lisa, the strength of America has always been its diversity. And the fact that people of differing opinions can come together and work together in a community is what makes this community strong.
Well, certainly, but that's why we're saying we're proud to be American, so we join together at the beginning of each meeting to say we're proud to be American. I mean, I understood when people made a point of saying the pledge of allegiance and what, to Kevin's point where he said, I'm saying under God and somebody else is making a point saying not under God and they're being very overt about it. I found that to be rude as well. If you don't want to pledge and say the word under God, don't make a scene about it, just be quiet in your own way about it. I feel like it's other people's, it's okay for other people to say that they don't like it and to be very forthright with their disdain about it, but when somebody else stands up about it and says that it's important, then they're judged for that.
Well, I don't think any of us want anybody judged, and that's really what I was hearing when people said they're uncomfortable because there is this sense that you don't stand up and put your hand on your heart and say it with everybody else, and you're going to stand out as a person who isn't a proud American or doesn't believe in America. And I don't think that that is a correct view of what these people are saying when they're talking, so... And I think it is the case that certain people are not comfortable with it, and it doesn't have anything to do with how much they believe in this country or our Constitution. And reasonable minds can differ on this. This is about internal emotions. And so, I heard what you had to say, I don't see it the same way as you do, and I don't want to vilify you for saying it, or somebody else who says they're not comfortable with it. I don't want that kind of energy happening at the start of every meeting, and I think there is a little bit of it personally. That's just my view.
I gotta say something, I want to apologize, I guess, because when I said we threw the flag out because we came here and we threw a bunch of stuff away, most people, majority of everyone here, got offended. So they love the flag. I was just joking, it was probably a bad joke, but I like bad jokes.
But I just think it's interesting that...
But the thing is, everybody, everybody's face was shut, what? They love the flag, everyone knows they love the flag. And we didn't throw away, I didn't know it wasn't here.
But it's not even in the room, that's why I'm saying we're not even acknowledging anymore. At least we had a flag that was in the room in every county building, which we are, where government entity has the flag, and the California flag.
And that's a different question of whether the flag should be here, but we are an elected...
We have two buildings and one flag.
We are an elected board and we have put through the democratic process, we put it out here to discuss as a community and have a vote. And I really respect the democratic process, and I'm glad everybody has been able to discuss this and feel like they could be part of this discussion and that we're going to have a vote on it, according to procedures. We've got one more person who's got her hand up.
I, we are from Czech Republic and we came from a...
Welcome.
We've been here for fifteen, twelve years, but we came from different kind of country. Czech Republic or, you know, the Eastern European countries are not like you guys, if I say that. Like, together in a nice way. We don't stand up and hold our hand on our heart, and we don't have the flag all exposed and people really love the flag. It's nice to, you know, be part of this country, and I am American, he's not yet, he has a green card. It's just nice, you should be proud of that, that's why you're a strong country, one of the, you know, strongest in the world because you are united and you should stay that way, don't, don't, I don't know. I'm surprised because I did the, you know, I became American, I did the test and the pledge and all that. I'm kind of surprised that so many of you don't want to do it. Because I came to this country because of the strongness of belief to, I don't know, this kind of stuff, you guys. In Czech or Slovakia or Ukraine, it's not like the post-communist countries, broken, horrible, horrible politics. You should actually be proud to be able to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, because I was really curious how you would feel about it coming from Europe.
I would say.
And I'm glad to share.
You know?
I think there's definitely a deterioration of patriotism in this country, and I think that goes, you know, I mean, that's proof where the immigrants are more proud to be Americans than the people that are born here. I see that a lot, there's definitely a swing, a tide going the other way. I mean, comments you guys made about swearing to defend against enemies foreign and domestic, you know what? That was put in there for a reason. We, you know, we did that originally when, you know, with Europe, we were sent over here and we had a battle with England and, you know, all that stuff, Revolutionary War and all that, you know? What, you know what I'm saying is, you know, defending this country was, used to be part of every person's duty and it's deteriorated. I mean, I'm not so much for the ceremony of saying the pledge of allegiance. It doesn't matter to me either way, but I do, I just want to make a comment that I believe that there is a deterioration of patriotism, and I think that it's definitely swinging here on this board, rather quickly.
You may be right, I'm reading right now the biography of Benjamin Frank Bunton. Read lots of history about our founding fathers. As I said, the pledge of allegiance didn't even come into existence until over a hundred years after we were founded. So it wasn't, wasn't part of what we were about, and again, it's not legally required. Let's see if we can wrap up, Linda?
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate your willingness to stick your necks out to bring this up in public forum rather than just deciding laterally, to hear all the points of view. And, and I just looked it up, the pledge of allegiance was written by, was written in August of eighteen ninety-two by the socialist minister Francis Bellamy, who lived from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen thirty-one. It was originally published in the Youth Companion in September eighth, eighteen ninety-two. Bellamy had hoped that the pledge would be used by citizens in any country. It was later added to the United States of America and then honoring the flag. There are religious reasons not to do it because it's like idolatry, there are religious reasons to do it. I think that it is not an innocuous pledge, it carries a lot of weight. And some of it is good, it's we're all in this together, kind of, we're American, red, white, blue, fourth of July. But I think the fact that people will accuse someone of not being patriotic, we have some concerns about saying the pledge. I personally have some concerns about anything that makes us all stand up and pledge an oath to one thing and talk about religion when some people may not be religious at all. So I think that it is potentially divisive, and I think you're really brave to question it.
Thank you. Cindy, and then if it's possible, we want to try to end the night by eight-thirty.
Okay. I'm very patriotic and I love America, et cetera, especially because I've lived outside of the US and so I really appreciate what we have here. And to live anyplace else, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to necessarily. But I don't see the pledge as being something that I have to say to prove that I'm patriotic. And so, that's, I don't, I don't like the whole God thing either, and that changed when I was in elementary school. I remember it was a big deal, but, you know, for someone to think that I'm not patriotic because I don't want to do the pledge of allegiance and put it over my heart, that doesn't sit well with me, so...
Why don't we take a...
I have one more comment, there was a comment made that you all, and I never voiced an opinion for or against doing the flag salute, so I'm not part of any of you all, so I just wanted to say that. Yeah, I grew up a campfire girl, you know? I'm just so used to it, to the fact, I don't have feeling against it.
I don't think so.
I'm really, I'm really interested in what people do feel about it, so this has been very interesting.
Yeah, I had to, I just chimed in with you Shay, I'm kind of the same way. My ancestors fought in the Revolutionary War, you know, I'm...
Mine too.
Yeah, you know.
Against each other or with each other?
Sons of the American Revolution.
That'll be different for all Americans.
I already said more in public than about it, and I really do, so... I get, when the, when the, when the Star Spangled Banner is sung at the football games, I get home weepy, I don't care. That's me.
I'm a compromise, let the flag, let the, let the flag and forget the pledge, and that's a compromise, it's fifty-fifty.
All right, so let's have a, I think we should put up the flag in the room because this is a place where we have public meetings and for the time being, we will not start with the pledge of allegiance. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, all those opposed, so it passes. So we get the flag back in here.
It's still here, it's looped it out while we were throwing stuff away.
This place was mad, and these people were going crazy, throwing stuff away, throwing everything.
All right, we have...
We did not throw out the flag.
We have only one other item of other business on the agenda. And this is an appointment that was made by me on a committee that I formed since the last meeting. And some of you may have heard of it, there's a new committee called the Silverado Children's Center Oversight Committee. And that is a new committee, it is the only committee that, of the board, that deals with the children's center at this time. And Kevin Top is the chairman of that committee, and I am the other member at this time. And the purpose of the committee is to coordinate closely with our director, Lori Briggs, and make sure that when she is thinking of, whether it's making special offers or having events or hiring or firing people, or changing the way of doing business at the children's center, anything that fundamentally concerns how it's run or how she is conducting herself as an employee of the district, and that's what she is, she is an employee of this district, she is responsible to this board under our district policy. She needs to be talking, most importantly, to Kevin and to me. And if we deem it that it's something that the board needs to deal with, then we have to have a board meeting to discuss it. So the committee also is responsible for dealing with the pending litigation, which we are in as a result of Lori Briggs' termination and Jenny Scott. We have two lawsuits that are ongoing in that regard, and Kevin Top spent the better part of the day at the deposition for Lori today in connection with one of those claims. So we have to, as a board, we have to be supervising what's happening, and we have to be much better informed about what's going on at the children's center and in connection with the lawsuit. So that is the purpose of it, and at this point, because of the nature of what we're dealing with, these are the only two appointments I'm making, Kevin is chairman and myself as the other member, and when as we need to, we will bring up matters for this board. Obviously, we have coming up at the end of the month, the question of what do we do with the children's center? Last meeting, this was, the board decided to contend to not terminate at the end of January, but to allow it to go through February, and some of the parents wanted to present a business plan, and the board agreed to do that, we got the business plan yesterday, and we'll be having extensive discussion about that at the next meeting. We are not going to be discussing that tonight, it's not on the agenda, and some of us have not had time to read it. But Diggy, I appreciate all your effort in that regard, provided us with an extensive business plan, it's quite long. And because I spent all day with our counsel and dealing with other things, I have not read it yet. It's going to take a little while to study that, but I appreciate your help on that. So that is, these appointments are made by district policy by the president when and as needed, so that's something, I'm just informing you, has occurred. We are now to, we're going to have as a final item that we have to deal with. We have a closed session, but we have here opportunity, if people do have public comments that need to be made here, they can do so, I'm not sure we need to do that at the special session or that it's even required, but I'm still learning. And certainly, we're going to have a meeting in two weeks, so if someone feels like there's something they need to bring to our attention, something going on, go ahead, Connie.
You know I love you guys, let's start with that.
Thank you. A lot of love in these people. Yeah.
That's just like saying, I love you, Andy.
However, I think the three-minute, I think, you said some things that bounced in my head, is you said this and did this. I think democracy demands an open, vibrant discussion, not a three-minute and shut up. And this community is small enough where if it takes us all day to talk about something, maybe we need to make all day to talk about something. With the three-minute rule, actually, I've been fed up about this enough where I've been having this long conversation in my head, so I withdrew most of it saying I'm more than liking that. But the three-minute, the three-minute rule is onerous, it's below you, it's harmful to the community. It makes, it, it shows, it makes you look, in my view, weak and incapable of dealing with the situation. So, from my view, I would strongly recommend, if you need all day to talk about it, let's have a party, I'll order pizza, we'll sit down and we'll talk about it. Especially, I don't know, this is about to be a white case, a total set, because I'm really behind you guys, but... It's a strong, completely, and not three minutes and shut up. The board of supervisors can pull that aside. This is the canyon, this is home, this is your family, I'm family, you're family, I'll go to that for each and every one of you, I'll pour your ass out of the fire, this is important, and we need to talk about it.
Connie, can I, I asked, I asked John if I could respond to that because I hate the three-minute rule too, okay? I agree with everything you said about it, now, now. And I love, however, now, I noticed something that happened at the, at the meeting, and that was, you know, John was enforcing the three-minute rule, more or less. But what happened was, we had a very long meeting, and what happened was, three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, and then we went round again, and I went, oh, this isn't so bad as long as the time is given because this way, everybody has a chance to talk. The kicker here is that you've got to let the meeting go along so that if someone wants to put in nine minutes, they've got a chance to speak three different times, but everybody else has a chance to speak too. So like, I mean, no, I'm just saying, what you've got to do, the only, the only way I like the three-minute rule is when it's given in a state that you, there's no time limit overall because it does allow people, everybody, to get their words, words in. If somebody stands up and gives a forty-five minute speech, then nobody else has got a chance to talk. So I've kind of, I'm with you, but I've kind of changed my mind about it, providing, if necessary, the meeting goes to midnight and everybody has a chance to really say everything they want to say.
I'm good with that at the second...
I mean, that's how the last meeting was.
Well, except, at the end, it was, I haven't heard from this person, I get to speak, but I have heard from that person, so that person didn't get to speak, and if you doubt me, go look at the tape. So what I'm saying is, let's make this process down and send out a meeting and say, okay, we're just going to talk about, we're going to pick Saturday morning at ten o'clock, and if we're here at midnight, we're here at midnight, and I'll bring pizza.
I appreciate your comments, and I'll give you my response, and this is something I'm going to think about. We're not going to decide anything about it tonight, it's not an action item. Three minutes is something that the Brown Act allows for, and, you know, the last meeting is the first time that we had to use it, and I didn't know how it was going to work. I'm used to having to, I've spent my life making timed arguments in front of judges. And I understand that a lot of people, it may not be something they're comfortable with, but we went till eleven and everybody who wanted to speak got to speak. And we were at eleven o'clock when that was done. And we were at eleven o'clock when that was done. We had a four-hour meeting with tremendous participation. And just let me make my point and then we'll, we'll move on. But I, my own experience is, I reach a point where I can't process anymore. And I think most people are like that. And we, as board members, need to be able to hear and process what's being said. And this is a situation where generally, we meet on Tuesdays at seven. You can't meet earlier because people, some people have jobs. We don't get paid for what we do. This is, you know, believe me, this is a, this is a, you give your time. And I'm spending easily over a hundred hours a month, easily, on this as a service. So, and I do want everybody to have a chance to speak. And when we go to eleven, I'm, I'm sitting there thinking, wow, it's a miracle because I'm still here and I feel like I'm still clear. But.
You could've rolled that over.
Let me say something.
And there may be certain times when we have to do that, but the three-minute rule, I felt at the last meeting, even though you let me know at that meeting, you were not happy with it, I felt it worked for the people who were there and it worked for me. So that's my response.
My response is, it makes for a, a meeting that's gonna let everyone speak. It also keeps someone from running a filibuster. And, and maybe boring everyone to death was their point, being drilled and wait, I'm not done. But it's the same one over and over and over. And, and that can be obnoxious. When you go to the Supreme Court to, to go to a case, they only give you a certain amount of time. We had a debate here that we had to sit here and to give an answer.
One minute for a number of them and we had like two minutes for our opening.
And, and so there's time limits on everything. There's time limits on everything. We understand, I understand that, but I believe it to be a little more selfish to not, to not want to be in the three-minute rule. Because you think your word is more important than everyone else's. So that's the way that can come across.
I think everybody needs to vote. You guys can't figure it out in the time we have, we need to not take a vote and we need to roll it over until we can get all the participation in. That's my problem.
We didn't say that. That makes sense. But there is still, I think there's a great reason to have a three-minute.
We're at the end where if people have a comment they wanna make, they can do it and we need to get to our closed session.
Just really quick, one of the things that, whenever there's hot issues or topics that we have going on, like she said, there's a lot of different things that people wanna say. And I had suggested before, maybe when there's big issues, doing a town hall meeting where it's not something that the board votes on, but it gives the community a time to hash out the issues and the opinions. And then that information, everybody gets to do their brain dump there. And then when you have the meeting, then, then responses and communications are clear and concise because the hash out was done at the town hall meeting. And maybe it's not called a town hall meeting, I'm just.
Yeah, and I'm not really, I'm not really familiar with, I haven't seen what you're talking about, so it's not. I'm thinking of a town hall meeting with Bill Clinton sitting in New Hampshire or something.
Use Tim as an example, but. No kidding. But I just mean, another meeting, just another meeting for the community, call it a community discussion meeting, where it's just a time for important issues for the community to talk about things.
They have had several of those up here that way. They put together, they have put together on major issues in the past, community meetings that weren't SMRPD meetings. And you know, they try to deal with different things. I don't know how that worked with the board than bringing your, but you know, there's major issues up here. We typically do have meetings. So maybe somebody outside of the board can possibly organize that meeting if they know it's a hot button issue with the board. What I'm saying is not the board's responsibility, is what I'm saying. Somebody from the community can organize a meeting, get everybody together, hey, we got this problem. Children's center, we'll use that as an example because it's the example we're all talking about. And try to get everybody their opinion out and so there's kind of more of a consensus. And then you know, I'm coming to the board to present my side and I know I got three minutes. So.
Okay, good. Thank you for your comment. Let's, let's try to wrap it up. Let me see. I'm not sure. I think, I don't know your name yet.
I just thought that last week, the agenda for the hot topic, which was the school, a lot of people came forward and parents with kids came, you saw them, and then they left. Because obviously, the whole hot topic started at ten-thirty or maybe ten-fifteen.
Actually, it started about eight-thirty and we went till eleven.
We went till eleven.
We had two and a half hours on the hot topic.
Yeah, I thought it was ninety-four, but that's okay. It was just late. For us, I mean, we tried, but I mean, so many parents left and maybe they were have said something, you know, their opinions on the school.
Right. Thank you.
It went well.
That was our first meeting. We had a lot of things to cover and so that's why I got started.
Well, we have a lot of things to cut out of these one-month meetings. We're supposed to get all the business done. And under the Brown Act, there's so much that we have to do right here in front of you. And as a business person, it's kind of like crazy, but nevertheless, that's how it has to happen. And it's a volunteer job and it takes huge amounts of time. So unfortunately, the meetings are difficult and sometimes long and we wanna get a lot of things done.
I just have some, it's a kind of copy. It's a couple of different questions that I have taken advantage of in a special meeting. There's been some correspondence between me and a guy with opposite emergency services in California and Phil. And there's a question about the, some payments that might be outstanding and don't work back. It said that according to Megan, there was one last payment, there was never a receipt.
According to that letter, it looked like we, we had a twenty-nine thousand dollar payment coming. Okay, so you know, that's the way the letter sounded to me. But what was all the number, what was the number in that money?
I don't have it in front of me, but I had actually, there's a full report that I presented to you, the board at the time. And I also have a full notebook of stuff and a junk drive that I wanna give to you all. I helped off of getting it to the board prior to this, it was a little bit disorganization and I wasn't sure they would know what to do with it, so.
Well, let me, let me just cut to the quick because we're, we're gonna have some conversations, you and I are gonna have some conversations about this. But from your angle, done, complete, money, money all done, we're through?
Everything is done. Absolutely.
Okay, then I'll talk to you about what I, what I was interpreting and, or whatever.
I need to see what we were talking about.
Yeah, and I, okay, we'll do this, we'll do this. I just, I was just wanting to know from your side as far as, you know, because you were spearheading the thing, you know. So if, if you say it was, it was done and completed and the money was exchanged and it's all over and done, but then.
I've got a beautiful spreadsheet I can.
Okay.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, although we were really hoping that there was some money.
I would love it. On a different topic here is the, the issue, I don't know if you all are aware of it, of the Adopt a Roadway program for San Diego Canyon Road is on hold right now because the proposal, as it was on the agenda for the, for the board supervisors, was not consistent with what ICL had approved. We had a conditional approval about the signs and, and the local, who would be sponsors. Those conditions were not met, so we withdrew our endorsement and asked for a two-week extension in order to come to an agreement. So we are now working with the corridor committee and Public Works and people in the community who have concerns for this Adopt a Roadway program.
We are also endorsers of that, this board is.
Okay. All right, can we?
No, do we have to make?
Oh, like, we'll have two more comments and that's it because we're running over. And believe me, you can make comments at the next meeting too.
I had a question about the last topic. Do we, if we are supporters of that sign, the signage, the Adopt a Highway, do we need to alert them if we wanna pull our?
Well, we'd have to do that in a special, we'd have to do that in a meeting. We'd have to vote to no longer endorse that project because the previous board voted to endorse.
Yeah, because they're not doing any earth-colored signs. They're doing the regular blue signs and that's the whole thing.
We would need to be in contact with Linda.
So are you saying we should put that on our agenda for next meeting?
Well, I think it might be too late. I will tell them there's some concern within the SMRPD board and that because of.
Well, our next meeting is, the last Tuesday, which I think is the twenty-eighth. And if it's before that, we're not gonna have a special meeting to deal with that sign.
It'll come before the board supervisors on the.
Just let us know if you need something, all right?
I will.
Well, I'm kind of on the agenda for our next meeting.
All right, let's, let's finish up the comments. Diggy, you had your hand up.
I just wanna thank the board for letting us get the business plan turned in. And, and what I see as the next step is, is somebody needs a champion that, and I'm not really sure who's gonna be doing that right now. And, and, and there's time between now and the next board meeting to kind of think about that. I'll get that, the plan done in a very rushed manner with holidays and personal commitments. With another week, it would have been, I think, a much more comprehensive plan. But any business plan is a living document. It's, it's not a static document. And thank you. And we have a lease on the property for a childcare center that expires in two thousand forty-three. I think if we put a dollar amount to a thirty-year lease here in Orange County, that would be well into the millions of dollars. And I hope we don't squander that. Thank you.
You had your hand up.
Yeah, I heard about your children's center in the newspaper. And it was a story that kind of reached out to me and I wanted to help and so I wanted, I guess.
Do you mind telling us your name?
Sure, it's Ed Ling.
Ed Ling.
Yeah. And I work in Irvine, live in Newport Beach, but I'm a big fan of kids, I guess. I teach baseball lessons. I'm a big brother, big brothers and sister, big brother, big sisters. I call the Boys and Girls Club in St. Anna's. So I really do have a passion for this kind of project. And you know, John and Kevin, I guess this is for you guys. How can I help? What can I do to participate in the, I guess revival of the children's center? And then also the sustainability of that center over time. So I know raising money is one thing, but being able to have it sustainable over time is another. But anyway, I wanna offer my services to you guys as a volunteer to do whatever I can to help.
Thank you. And I think you've been in touch with Kevin Top.
I have not yet.
Or was it Debbie?
No.
I didn't keep him in my house. I have your business card and I sent him to the children's center.
Oh yeah, I talked to her. So we drove her to her house.
Not the best way to meet someone.
Welcome to Silverado. That's exactly the way it works up here.
Just a little talk alone, that's all.
One final comment.
Is he a stouter?
No. There's three things actually, and I think it kind of goes together. First of all, your appointment, I think, is right on with having some oversight because I did have some concerns about that. Just a little bit of looked into it. However, I wanna make a suggestion because I don't know if you all know, because you're still gonna know me, but I was appointed official for ten years in Rancho Center, Maravilla, so I am somewhat familiar with this process. And it is possible to do things like, for example, focus groups in the community to garner community input and things like that. And then bring that type of input into the board in the form of reports and information that can be provided to the board. So I wanna make a suggestion that something as important to the community as a children's center, that this might be a really good forum for them. Because I know a lot of people got together, or some people got together, I did not during the holidays, to kind of flesh all this out. But the fact of the matter is, probably this should have been done, you know, six months ago when the last expenditure was done, right? So here we are now. And I think that that might be a good use and I would offer my services, I've done that before, for a profession and to help with that. But that is another way that you could avoid, let's say, the big long meeting and get the community input and the buy-in from everyone and capture some of those good ideas, keep them having a big long meeting, but then bring those things in and maybe even tailor what's already been started and enhance or some other ideas. Because just sitting in there, I can see already, my son's there, my son's in the other school. I can see things that, just little things that come to me like, oh, I need to think about that. So I just wanna throw that out there that that's within your purview as a board.
Thank you. And she wants to respond. She's got a lot of experience.
The first thing I did was run a focus group with the parents at the children's center. I did that four days after, after you were sworn in. So, and I also run focus groups for a living. So, and we're going to be organizing more of them as we start organizing the rec program. We will be organizing them in Majeska so we can figure out how we can better serve residents over there. And we're gonna be organizing them with school-aged parents and kids here. So they're on the agenda for us to do that.
Okay. And there was also a community brainstorming meeting.
Yeah, and then we're like that, six months ago.
Yeah.
Right.
So all that's been done.
Right. And no, it's part of what we do.
And no one picked up the ball or went any further with this.
Okay.
So there's not enough interest to do that.
Okay, and maybe that was the case. I don't know. I just kinda wanted to throw it out because I was really responding to the discussion about the three-minute limit and all that. And thinking there's other ways to do that meeting. And also that meeting, I think, was a really short notice, so there might be ways to do something, maybe a couple of different times. So just wanted to throw it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody, thank you for coming. Appreciate that everybody was talking about what really counted to them and it was crazy all the way. Wonderful that we made it like this. Thank you. Thank you.